Recording this meeting. Mr. Wortella. It's coming in.
Good evening.
Good evening, and just to let everyone know we are recording now that we have a forum present. Waiting on a couple, I did talk to Chris Newman earlier today, so I know he'll be on the call. And Rick Manchester. Well, I just got a text from Mr. Newman, he's unable to make the meeting as helping his mother move. So he'll be excused, and I will see about Mr. Manchester. One, two, three, four, six, oh, Rick Holmes as well. I'll give it a minute and a half here, Mr. Schenkel, then I'll bring up the agenda on a shared screen, it's just easier for me to see if Mr. Manchester Holmes joins the meeting. And then Don, when we do start, we'll just need you to state the address that you're remoting in from if it's not within the Village of Vicksburg.
You've got it.
Here's Rick Manchester.
Give it.
And I just got a text from Mr. Holmes, he's attempting to dial in now. So we'll see if he comes on here. As of now, we do have two citizens, Mr. Wagner and Miss Coney.
All right, well, it's seven oh one, and we have a quorum, so should we?
Sure, sure, let me jump over to see if I can bring this up. Everyone see that okay?
Yep, looks good. All right, so I lost my clock here, seven oh one, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Secretary DeBolt, can you take attendance for us, please?
Yes, sir. Schenkel.
Present.
Manchester.
Present.
Mutcha.
Present.
Cox.
Present.
Hunt.
Present.
Newman is absent. Holmes.
He's, if you could wait to the end, he's just, it's just coming.
I'll watch for when he comes online. Wortella.
Present, and I'm at five, six, six, zero, two, East UV Avenue, Vickers.
And DeBolt, yes.
And Mr. Holmes should be able to hear us now.
Yes, I can hear, and I am in Galesburg, Michigan, right now.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Item number three is approval of the agenda. I do know Mr. DeBolt would like to present a couple items to add, so you might go ahead and present those to us, Secretary DeBolt.
Yes, we had two, two DDA actions, one is for the repaint program. For the, for the members of the board that are not aware of that, we allocated a thousand dollars a year that businesses can use to repaint their buildings if they purchased the product from the hardware store, which Vickers has done, so I'd like to make that a seven C. And seven D is that they've completed their first phase of their grant program. I'd like to make that seven D.
Seven C and seven D we're adding to the agenda for tonight. So do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda with those amendments?
This is Wortella, I, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, we have a motion for Wortella.
Rick Manchester.
Second.
Support from Manchester. Secretary DeBolt, can you call, roll, roll call on this, please?
Schenkel.
Yes.
Manchester. Mutcha.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Hunt.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Wortella.
Yes.
DeBolt, yes.
Great. Agenda item number four is approval of February eighth minutes. I trust everyone's had a chance to review those minutes, is there any corrections or comments that you would like to make? Hearing none, I will call for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February eighth. If that I had a hard time hearing them.
Approve the minute. Oh, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I make a motion to approve the minute meetings as they are.
All right, do we have support?
I'll second it.
Second, support from Hunt. Secretary DeBolt, can you do a roll call, please?
Schenkel.
Yes.
Manchester.
Yes.
Mutcha.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Hunt.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Wortella.
Yes.
And DeBolt, yes.
Thank you. Item number five is public comment. Do we have any comment from the public?
Just looking again, I know both Jackie and Ryan know how to highlight and raise a hand if they wish to speak, so I'll give it thirty seconds here if I see Jackie, Coney, or Ryan Wagner electronically indicate they'd like to say something. And I do not see that indication, Mr. Schenkel, so I believe they're both okay.
Great, thank you. Agenda item number six is the village manager report.
Yes, thank you, we have just a couple updates, we want to update everyone as we, we go along on the downtown infrastructure project, I mean, right now, it's both on Washington Street and Spruce Street, pretty significant movement, they're very pleased with the way it's going so far with one week complete, and we're just starting our second week. You'll, Washington Street does have the road removed, we are down where a new culvert's going to be put in, and you should see significant work in both de-watering this week as well as placing that needed equipment underneath the street, which it takes out the old fashioned, just round cylinder tube, and we'll be putting in a full cement culvert, so that'll be very advantageous to the village as well as coming out with the new, a new forest main coming out of that lift station. Over on Spruce Street, the same thing, we have had de-watering operations over on Spruce Street now for a week. Dug our first hole today, put the safety barriers in, they're about twelve feet deep going down as far as eighteen feet. They also, a lot of prep type work in identifying fiber lines, gas lines, and making sure we don't cause any headaches or problems for ourselves, but that as well is progressing very satisfactory, I'll pause there and certainly answer any questions that my members might have.
Jim, this is Don Wortella.
Yes.
How do negotiations go with the railroad to get, get through that crossing?
Well, that started probably eighteen months ago, I think we made the formal request over two years ago. So it's a permit that you apply for, it usually takes a year to get approved. So we've had that approval for about a year now, and the safety on that intersection is part of the contract has a railroad employee there the whole time, work operations are going, that have constant communications with the trains and that.
Thank you.
Yep. He's usually the gentleman sitting on the east side of the street in his car keeping warm until a train goes by. There's no other questions, the other item is, it is entering the budget season for the fiscal year twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. I did send out last year's document. Interesting, again, when we were impacted about a year ago, this time by COVID and how we set the budget up, but that's to give all members an idea what we're looking at and what, what we really want from the membership, and I've sent an email out, and you'll see by the end of the week, scheduling one-on-one time with each of you, all the council members, planning commission members, parks and rec members, historical society board officers to get input. I'll be meeting with those people electronically, and then in the same time period, Alex Lee will be having contact with all of our business owners in the village to have them solicit on different priorities of the budget. I'll, when I send that timeout to each of you, I'll have an attached sheet that will be basically I'm gonna mute here a second. That will flow and make our conversation smooth, so you'll see what I'm looking for, but the essence of it is, is just priorities village-wide, we'll talk about, you know, walkability, we'll talk about the future of the village, the directions it's going, and and in different priorities you might have to have input as we prep the budget. In April, at the planning commission meeting, we'll probably have some action items, but as well, we'll be going through, we'll have on the agenda to go through an actual exercise to, to refine those needs, wants, and wishes, a lot will be prepped individually, and then I'll have documents that will demonstrate everyone's input as well as staff's recommendation. And that'll be discussion in April, we, from there, might have refined one-on-one time to, to talk, we'll move into the May, and we'll hopefully be in a position to seek support from this group, reference the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year as it relates to the DDA. And we will move that forward to the council. Right now, hopefully, the third Monday of May, as we divide up for the council members, different aspects of the budget, so just wanted everyone to know, we can't stop time, and that is coming up as well. Other things we might, we're right now getting information on is those receptacles and signs. Alex and I took a trip to a neighboring municipality that has a social district, got different ideas from how it's working with their establishments, as well as what they're using, both cups and sign wise, so this, for both the receptacles and signs, be it that this is in the DDA area, it's going to be staff's recommendation that we utilize those funds to protect the general fund tax money. And I'll pause there, if there's any questions, reference either the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year prep or anything else. And I think I hit the Rick, put a thumb up if you want, I don't, I hit you on mute, I'm trying, okay, you're all good, I take it, so, okay. Go ahead, Rick Manchester.
No, I'm good.
Okay, and Rick Holmes gave me the thumbs up, so I believe he's good, but I'll be happy to answer any questions. If not, we're, we're proceeding well, I'll also in April give you an update where we are, we'll probably be doing third quarter budget amendments for the DDA, but the budget's looking very well, we did prep a budget very conservatively with COVID and our receipts, our revenues exceeded what we projected, but we'll have that all updated and do the budget amendments as we do every year in April as well, so that's it, Mr. Schenkel.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven is downtown development authority, so we do have, I believe you just touched on the needs, wants, and wishes for the next fiscal year, you want to add anything to that, or?
No, I just, I rolled through seven A and B as well.
Okay. So, John, I'm going to turn this over to you for seven C. You want to kind of present this to us and kind of tell us a little bit of kind of what you're looking at, and then I believe the, the DDA subcommittee should have reviewed this as well, correct?
They should have, but this, this document here was not reviewed with the subcommittee.
Okay.
Just to be straight up, it is a program that has always been in the DDA with the, with this, so it's always been brought to the board, and if, if the the business applies for it, you, the DDA has always recommended that it be taken care of. Again, what it was, was a paint program for repainting the businesses downtown. They are up to two hundred dollars eligible for paint if they purchase it from the hardware store. So what I'm asking is a
If, if I can, if I can, one thing that's a little bit different now that we're under the planning commission and the bylaws that were accepted by this group in the council, any item that is under a thousand dollars is the preview for staff to go ahead and expense prior to coming to the board. So under this existing program, and be it that the limit couldn't exceed a two hundred dollar reimbursement, it was approved to move forward, now what is tonight is the commitment we, we made to the planning commission is to, to let them know what would possibly be expensed out of the DDA funds. So, so this is at a limit that does not require approval of, of the board.
So at that point, we don't need to motion as far as the payment on that, is that correct, Jim?
That's correct, per the new, the, the bylaws, does anyone have any questions on that?
Just to, just to clarify, the, the amount that we would need to vote on is over two hundred dollars, or?
No, it's, it's over a thousand.
Over a thousand, okay. And so so I think what I heard was the village staff has the ability to approve these as long as they're under that threshold without government board, board approval.
Correct, the level that we set within the planning commission for DDA funds was a thousand dollars in, under the regular, under the policies of, of the village, utilizing any other funds, including general funds, the limit's five thousand, so there's still a little bit tighter oversight in the use of DDA money, but I don't know, my word, there, there also was, within the development of these bylaws, some latitude that staff, due to these being monthly meetings, could, could make a decision, but we also committed to reporting what that money was expensed.
Yeah. So I, I'm, I'm fine with that, I think my question more lies with the DDA subcommittee reviewing this. And the, and the, making sure that some governing body has reviewed the request.
We, we did, and so did John. The, 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 they purchased the paint from the hardware store and provided that receipt.
Okay. Well, I know, okay, so what I'm hearing is the staff reviewed it, and then John did, but not the DDA subcommittee.
There's no requirement unless we're going to change it, there wouldn't be a requirement to have a DDA subcommittee, they don't have authority as a subcommittee to vote on action anyway.
Right, yep, I, I completely agree, probably more looking for a recommendation from that, just to make sure there's an I guess, another checks and balances, so to speak, but if that's I don't, I don't know what precedent is, is there from a DDA standpoint.
There, there, there is no precedent, because we started over, that we operate under the bylaws of the planning commission that was enacted by this group in the council.
Okay.
If, 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 it, it, it doesn't matter to me if this group wants a DDA subcommittee, I, they can review it, they all could say no, and it's still staff's preview to, to implement it under the policy, so that's where I, I, it's how you, you want to operate, they, but I want to make it very clear for the record, that subcommittee cannot take a vote to even approve it.
Right. Well, I, I guess I would open it up to the rest of the commission and just invite any comments on this. I don't, I don't know if I have a strong feeling one way or the other, I just want to make sure kind of due diligence is being done here.
I assure you with my word on the reputation on the line, we make sure it's within policy.
Sure. Yeah, I just want to make sure the, the commission is comfortable with the process, because, you know, what we're, what we're being shown is something that's kind of after the fact, so, you know.
Could I reiterate on that, Mr. Schenkel?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, when Vickers applied for the first, for the grant program, for this, for their sign that is on the next agenda item, the, the paint program was introduced to them for the back of the build, the building, when, that would be in combination with the grant program. Because if you, you, when it was, when they applied for the grant, you know, the, the paint program was introduced to them as well, that, because they had to paint the back of their, or the front of their building before they could attach the sign to their building, so it was brought up back at the meeting that we approved the grants that were brought up at the time, if I go back through the minutes, it was, it was in there, and this program is for any business in the downtown DDA area, it was brought to the, to the DDA area, more or less to stimulate using local businesses, using the local businesses downtown, and to spruce up the way the buildings were looking downtown. But this certain document was presented back when the grant program was initiated to the Vickers Lakeside Tavern. Does that make sense to you?
Absolutely.
Okay. So going on to seven D, their project, Jim has that on there that he could share with you.
Let me, just a second, here, I gotta, no, I got this view, I think it's up, can everyone see it, it's the it's the grant request, and on this, for clarification, this was already approved by the planning commission. Now, Vickers has, has turned in the receipts, identified that they met their obligation of the grant, so this is the reimbursement of that money that was already approved, so now it's, we would be cutting the check and, and sending that to them tomorrow.
Could I explain what they did to the board?
Yeah, absolutely, I was just, go ahead.
Okay, what they did is they replaced the pylon sign out front with a new box, the sign itself, the wiring, which was all done through the permits, the proper permits, and a licensed electrician that installed it, SignArt made the, the box and the signs, and made the new wall sign that was attached to the building that was painted from the paint program, so that all came to a total of eighty eight hundred and, or eight thousand eight hundred eighty six dollars, which they qualified for the twenty five hundred dollar reimbursement. This, this we will need a motion on, is correct, Jim?
And as I see it, these, these facade grants are approved, and I don't know how the board could now not, could go back, we, you approve this request, the business met their obligations, submitted, so I would see this, and again, I'll do whatever this board wants, but basically what's happened is, we reviewed the receipts, ensured that they spent what they said they would, it basically that they met the eligibility for the grant, and we can cut the check, and remember, it's a reimbursement, so the companies that are in receipt of this grant money, put all the money up front, and they get the work complete. So we get to see the finished product, we know exactly how much it costs, and then this is in a reimbursement up to those amounts that were approved, so I would defer to the group, I I, it's, it's been approved, but
Yeah, I don't think that we need to rehash that, and that's probably part of my confusion on that, and I apologize for creating more confusion. These are these are just check requisition, so I don't think there's anything that we could approve to manage your Mallory's point.
Does, and I guess I'll, I'll defer to the members of the subcommittee. We're going to have more of these, we're going to encourage it, in fact, we're going to look hard at expanding the amount of grants available downtown, when we, I mean, would, and I think it's Mr. Cox and Mr. Wortella, at least on that committee. Mr. Cox and Mr. Wartella, at least on that committee, I don't know if they want something sent to them by us confirming after the, confirming that, hey, this was reviewed and meets the requirements, but I'll, I'll sit back and listen to, to, to what you want.
This is Don Wartella. My take on this is that when a grant request is submitted and based on the, the grant, facade grant program, the rules, regulations, and policies, then monies could be approved up to twenty-five hundred dollars, two thousand five hundred dollars. So when that grant request comes in and is approved, then in fact, I think we are approving an amount up to twenty-five hundred dollars. I, I, that's my take on it, and maybe John can, can expand upon a little bit. And, and I think as a member of the subcommittee, I'm getting the information I need from, from John DeBolt. So I'm, I'm satisfied with the, the progress that we're doing right now.
So yes, my question is, is if the, if this has already been technically approved at a previous meeting, does this need to come back? Do, do these items need to come back to this group? Because I, I mean, we're basically just reviewing them at, at this time. And there's nothing for us to, to vote on, or no action to be done. So I, I guess I'm just wondering, does the, does, do these check requisitions need to even come back to this agenda?
When I, I, I would say it's not required from a governmental sense on two points. The bodies have already proved the expenditure up to twenty-five hundred dollars, well within the purchasing policy of the village, the bylaws of this group, and the ordinances. It then is incumbent upon staff to ensure the grant requirements are met before any reimbursement is done. If in the future some staff elects not to ensure that, that that's taking place, then I imagine they'd subject themselves to being held accountable for that. So I, you know, hypothetically, if, if something changed, meaning they didn't expense the full amount, and therefore we weren't reimbursing the full twenty-five hundred, I don't think it ever hurts to be transparent with the information and the expenditure. So I don't want to get too long-winded. Firm, short answer is, I, I know it does not need a second approval, but certainly I have no problem with, with informing the board of the expense of the money. And the fact that the, another business successfully met the requirements of the grant. And, and on a side note, I'd like to highlight, I think what Vickers did looks, looks very well, both on their wall and the new sign.
This is Don. It would be acceptable to our chairman. I, I, I would not mind seeing the form that we have up there, just presented as information to the planning commission that it was completed, and just for information only.
The planning commission, does anyone have any strong feelings one way or the other?
Chair Shankle, if I might?
Sure.
Member Mutcha, I would support, member Wartella's thoughts on this. This is, it's nice information only just to close out some of these grants, just so we are aware that they met the stipulations of the requirements. And village manager Mallory is just informing us that, hey, it's been met, and we're cutting them a check. So there's finalization on the item.
Any other discussion? All right, so it sounds like this is going to remain for, for information purposes only item that when businesses do utilize the grant program and are reimbursed, these check requisition forms will come before this body.
Here, Shankle, can I mention something to them?
Sure.
Just to inform the board, we still have two grants that are out there that we'll probably be working on this spring that was approved back at the beginning of our fiscal year when we first started.
Great, thank you. John, can you tell us who those are? Is it possible?
Yeah, one is the Hideaway. The facade front of the Hideaway, and the other is Julie Merrill's west side windows that are being repaired on the historic building there. On the western, south side of the building, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think that's the, the end of the agenda. Is that right, Manager Mallory?
Let me switch back here. All right, let me switch back if I didn't lose it. Yes, down to members' comments.
Great.
Number eight.
All right, do we have any comments from the planning commission? So it's, I'll just kind of wrap up. It sounds like we might want to be considering needs, wants, and wishes for the, the village of Vicksburg. And be prepared to share your thoughts one-on-one with the village staff, so be, please be thoughtful, please do some research, look into opportunities that might serve us well in Vicksburg, and be prepared to share those thoughts with the village staff. All right, it is seven thirty-four, a very efficient planning commission meeting. And I will adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everyone. Have a great week.
Thanks.
Evening, folks.